I am calling to order the City of Bloomington Common Council's regular session for Wednesday, December the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rala.
Here.
Volin.
Here.
Scambalory.
Here.
Sim.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Before we get to the agenda summation, I'd like to make a couple of acknowledgements. It is my hope at some point that these practices and these thoughts are internalized as individuals. So they won't be something that will be more natural in how we operate. But as such, we acknowledge the land on which we now inhabit before being taken away was first inhabited by populations of indigenous peoples in our area and our region. Those populations were the Miami Peoples, the Delaware Peoples, the Potawatomi Peoples, and the Shawnee Peoples. We also acknowledge the labor of Black Indigenous and people of color and other marginalized populations used to help build not only the infrastructure but the wealth of our country, of which a great, great many of them cannot enjoy the privileges, entitlements, or the equity that our majority populations enjoy. Now with the agenda summation. Next on the agenda will be approval of minutes, which we have none this evening. Then we'll move to reports, where a maximum of twenty minutes is set aside for each part of this section. Reports will be council members, the mayor and city offices, council committees, if any, and then comments from the public. I will remind members of the public that they may speak on matters of community concern not listed on the agenda at one of the two public comment opportunities. Citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and this time allotment may be reduced by the presiding officer of numerous people wish to speak. Then we'll move on in the agenda to appointments to boards and commissions, if any. Then we have.
Recording stopped.
Then we have.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Then we have legislations for second readings and resolutions this evening. Ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding the James Ferris House Historic District, William Bianco, owner and petitioner. Then we have resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven, approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana regarding building code authority. And then we'll move to resolution twenty-one dash thirty-eight, which is to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana in regards to the twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, uh, Grant, sorry, known as G J A G, the JAG Grant. We have no legislation for first readings this evening. We will then move on to a period of additional public comment. Then we will deal with matters of the council schedule before adjourning for the evening. Okay, we're now to reports. Do we have any reports from council members this evening? I'll call as I see them. Uh, Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I, um, we certainly realize that COVID is still here. Uh, we almost take precautions, and I do want to make special mention, though, of of a few places here in town that are respectful of vaccinations and mask mandates, and that's the Busker family theater. And also the Orbit Room. Both of those establishments have been very, very conscientious about making sure that anyone entering those two venues are vaccinated and show proof of that, and also wear masks throughout the performances. And I know one of the things that I have missed the absolute most during this period of lockdown and sequester is going to hear live music, and whether that's a live theater or a dance performance or the opera. And so for any of those venues who are being so respectful of people's health and safety, I say thank you, and if you can, and you feel comfortable purchasing tickets, there's a lot of great holiday shows coming up, and we hope you will support our local artists. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, President Sims. Uh, I would just, I just wanted to mention that the Transportation Committee, uh, of which I'm, I'm still chair, it met to discuss and begin deliberations on the sidewalk allocation funds for two thousand twenty-two. And there's about three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars um, of funding for new sidewalk construction. We are waiting on some additional um, data from the city. And in January, we will have another meeting. So for anyone who's interested, keep an eye on the January calendar, and uh, we will have a subsequent meeting with some additional data from the city, uh, planning so that we might, uh, move a little bit farther forward. In addition to that, we did adopt some new criteria for allocating sidewalks that um, is an improvement in sidewalk equity, economic equity, social equity. So we're very happy about that. And uh, so if you're interested in that, uh, look, look for our January calendar. We'll, we'll be there with another meeting. So thank you, and thank you, President Sims.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Scambalory?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Uh, thank you, President Sims. Just a brief note that I won't be holding a December constituent meeting as the third Monday on which I normally host meetings falls after our, um, close of of all business for the year. Uh, so I'll pick those back up in January again on the same schedule of of third Mondays at five-thirty P M. And just wanted to announce that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Volin?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
No report tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rala.
Sorry, President Sims, did you just call me?
I did. I wonder if you had any.
I lost me.
Councilmember.
I lost me. I have no report. I lost my earbuds for a moment.
Okay, thank you. That's what it appeared to be. I didn't want to assume. Thank you very, very much. Okay, we'll now move down to reports from the mayor and or city offices. Seeing none, um, we'll now move to any reports from council committees, if any. Uh, Councilmember Flaherty?
Uh, yes, thank you, President Sims. Um, as Chair of the Climate Action Resilience Committee, I just wanted to update members that uh, we met briefly earlier this week with Lauren Clemmons from the Economic and Sustainable Development Department to discuss a meeting on a quarterly basis in in twenty-twenty-two, uh, to work on on climate action plans, sustainability action plan updates, as well as coordinating, um, council member work and, um, uh, legislative initiatives with with, um, in the vein of those two plans. Uh, if if members will recall, when we had a presentation from E S D staff in October, uh, part of the recommendations they had for updates, um, going into the new year included something like a quarterly meeting with with that committee. Uh, so we simply met to scope that process and and set things up for the new year. Uh, so just wanted to update members on that, and please feel free to reach out to me if you had additional questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Um, any other reports from any other council committees? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll now go to comments from members of the public. Um, I will remind members of the public that if you intend to make a public comment this evening, you can use the raised hand function on Zoom. Um, and you can, that's at the bottom of your screen, and you can get there by using the participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons. Um, or if you have a mobile device, you can reach us by star nine. And if neither of those work, you can send a note to the meeting host indicating that you're, uh, you prefer to speak on Zoom through the chat function, uh, send a meeting, a note to the meeting host through the chat function. Uh, we're asked that you please identify yourself, and you have five minutes to speak this evening. Ms. Lake, do we have anyone?
Yes, uh, we have Jim Shelton, who should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Castle. Uh, this is Jim Shelton. Want to update you and the public that the CASA staff has now developed the twenty-twenty-two training schedule. The trainings, the winter one will start in just a few weeks. It'll be February second through the twenty-eighth. Then there'll be another one in June that starts June first, and then, uh, the fall one will start September nineteenth. There'll be Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday evenings from five-thirty to eight-thirty. The plan right now is that they will be face-to-face, wearing masks, of course, and being distanced, but still they will, they hope to be face-to-face. The latest information we heard from Christian Boucher, the director, is that we have twenty-five children right now who we don't have a volunteer to assign to be their CASA. In fact, she was reaching out to the CASAs and asking us to consider taking on a second case to keep that number from growing. So we definitely need more volunteers. Uh, it's a wonderful volunteer opportunity, very fulfilling. The training will cover everything you need to know. You just need to be a persistent person and, uh, able to deal with people to be successful as a CASA. So I wanted to make people aware of that. It's a good New Year's resolution to, uh, find a volunteer opportunity. It's good for the community. It's great for the children, and it's good for you. So thanks for the opportunity to spread that word, and, uh, Happy New Year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shelton. Happy holidays to you as well. Uh, do we have anyone else? Ms. Lacy?
No.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move, um, down. Do we have any appointments to any boards or commissions this evening? Okay, seeing none. I do believe we have legislation for second readings and resolutions this evening. Councilmember Flaherty?
President Sims, I would like to move that ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved, the second, that ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six being introduced, read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry about that. Yes. Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you, and that motion passes eight zero zero. Councilmember Flaherty? I'm so sorry. Is there a motion to introduce? I'm sorry.
We, I'm sorry, we'd still need the synopsis read by the clerk as part of that motion.
Thank you. I'm getting ahead of myself as always. Please proceed, Madam Clerk. Sorry.
Okay, ordinance twenty-one forty-six to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to Establish a Historic District Regarding the James Ferris House Historic District, William Bianco, owner and petitioner. The synopsis says follows. This ordinance amends chapter eight point two zero of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled List of Designated Historic and Conservation Districts in order to designate the James Ferris House parcel number five-three dash oh-eight dash oh-three dash three-zero-zero dash zero-zero one point zero-zero-zero dash zero-zero-nine located at two zero zero one East Hillside Drive, Lot Eight, City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, as a historic district. Built in eighteen fifty-two, the James Ferris House is a remarkable intact example of the I-house form in Bloomington. The house is only one of a handful of Covenanter brick farmhouse from the early settlement period of Bloomington that still stand, and it maintains a high level of historic integrity due to the unaltered state of the original portion of the house. The house is associated with James Ferris, the first ordained minister of the Covenanter Church in Bloomington, a philanthropist, and a purported conductor on the Underground Railroad.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved, the second. Um, before we go any further, Councilmember Flaherty, Parliamentarian, um, thank you. Very good.
Uh, yes, I'd actually like to move Amendment One to ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved, the second for Amendment One to ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Uh, Mr. President, we, um, we don't need a roll call vote until we vote on the amendment in this case.
Thank you. And I will ask that, um, are you presenting or miss Colom Branya?
I will turn it over to city staff. Uh, yes, this amendment is brought by them, and I was happy to sponsor it.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. So the amendment is, um, number one, any reference to James Ferris shall be replaced with Reverend James Ferris wherever it occurs. Number two, the year eighteen fifty-two shall be replaced with the year eighteen forty-two wherever it occurs. Number three, the phrase ordained minister of the Covenanter Church shall be replaced with the phrase pastor of the Bloomington Reformed Presbyterian Church wherever it occurs. Um, so the amendment comes from the request of the, uh, the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Development and Scott Ferris, the great, great, great grandson of Reverend James Ferris, who provided additional information about Reverend James Ferris and the year of the the building was constructed. So he actually found personal family documentation that had the exact year and a lot of very detailed, um, documentation on it, on everything about the building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will now go to council members for any questions on Amendment One for ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to any public comment on ordinance, I'm sorry, Amendment One for ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six. Um, again, I'll repeat, you could reach us by using the raised hand function on Zoom through either the participants button, reactions button, or more buttons. On a mobile device, you can use star nine, or you can send a note to meeting host via the chat function on Zoom, um, if neither of those works. Ms. Lacy, do we have anyone?
I did not see any takers.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll return back to council for any final comments on Amendment One for this twenty-one dash forty-six. Thank you, seeing none. Um, are we ready for the question on Amendment One for this twenty-one dash forty-six? Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you, Amendment One to ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six is adopted eight zero zero. Um, we will now address ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six as amended. And I do believe we have city staff, it's Cologne Branya. Do you have a presentation for this ordinance as amended?
I do. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
The Reverend James Ferris House located on two thousand one East Hillside Drive, Lot Eight in Bloomington, Indiana. So this building is rated as no, a notable structure within the Bloomington Historic Sites and Structures Survey. The proposed single property district located, as I stated, two thousand one East Hillside Drive, Lot Eight, consists of two buildings and a parcel less than one acre. The main house is a two-story brick federal-style I-house built in eighteen forty-two by Reverend James Ferris, the first pastor of the Bloomington Reformed Presbyterian Church. The other building on the lot is a, is a wellhouse and is considered not a contributing resource. The property is located near the Thomas Smith House and the Tom, Thomas Smith House and the Covenanter Cemetery. It is currently owned by William Bianco, who applied for the nomination, supports the nomination. The Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission made a motion to begin formal designation proceedings at the October fourteen, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Um, Reverend James Ferris was the first pastor of the Bloomington Reformed Presbyterian Church. His family owned two farms that provided milk and dairy, and I believe other, um, uh, farm, um, uh, produce for Bloomington during the course of decades. Much of the Indiana University's athletic installations are located on the northern, what used to be the northern farm. Um, like his brother-in-law, Thomas Smith, uh, Reverend James Ferris was purported to be a conductor of the Underground Railroad in an article titled "The Underground Railroad in Monroe County." Henry Lester Smith, great-grandson of Thomas, and a dean of the University, Indiana University, from nineteen seventeen to nineteen forty-six, asserts that members of the Covenanter congregation conducted a section of the Underground Railroad that ran through Monroe County. The house has been documented and featured on multiple news retrospectives about Bloomington's history throughout the twentieth and twenty-first centuries. And here is, uh, the eighteen fifty-six plat map, and it, um, just wanted to showcase, um, the southern, um, square has the James Ferris, um, Southern Farm. There were two farms. Sorry. Um, so this is an I-house. Uh, I-house is known for having a chimney on either side. Uh, recently, you were able to, you saw the Smith, Thomas Smith House. This is very, very similar. It is a sibling house, uh, made of locally sourced materials, so not only the bricks but the wood as well. Um, it can, let me see, it does contain an architectural style detail or other element in danger of being lost. This type of architecture is, there aren't a lot of samples left in Bloomington. Um, most of the windows and doors are original. It does exemplify a built environment, the built environment of an era it, of history characterized by this very distinctive architectural style. So this is from the front, and, uh, yeah, so this is the Reverend James Ferris House. Thank you.
Thank you for, for turning your screen in for the presentations, Cologne Branya. Uh, we will now go to council. Do we have any questions of staff? Um, Councilmember Volin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you, Ms. Cologne Branya, for the presentation. Uh, one small point I noticed in your presentation was you talked about the windows being mostly original. Is that what it said? I don't quite recall, but I wanted to know about that point.
Yes, um, not every single window is original, I believe, but most of them, from what I understand, are.
So when you say original, does that include the glass, or is it just the structure of the window is still the same?
It's the, the glass, everything, yeah.
Oh, really? I mean, so it just, just for future sake.
The, the owner is actually raised his hand. He can actually attest in more detail.
Um, Mr. Bianco?
He should be able to, he should be able to unmute himself.
There you go. Um.
Thank you.
Yes, um, virtually. I don't, I don't know of any window to look at them virtually.
Excuse, excuse, excuse me, Mr. Bianco, just a technicality. Could you please identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm William Bianco. Uh, my wife Regina Smith and I own the Ferris House.
Thank you.
And, um, yeah, I can confirm that the windows appear to be the original windows with the original glass. About ten years ago, we installed very low-profile storm windows on the outside basically to modernize the house, but we left all the, um, original windows there, the storms that we were replacing, and they clearly were not original.
That's very interesting, and you anticipated my next question, which was, you know, were you concerned at all about the energy profile of the house and, uh, how can it be addressed? So, um, do you worry about the, I mean, if the glass is a hundred and fifty years old, is it, uh, is it thinning because glass is technically a liquid, and that, at that age, it tends to thicken at the bottom?
It, it doesn't appear to be doing that. Um, and we've done a lot of things to tighten the house up. Most recently, we, we, um, I'm standing in the kitchen right now, and we pulled the kitchen floor up and, uh, because it was structurally original, and, uh, you know, when we rebuilt it, we put insulation anywhere we could. Uh, we also just finished spraying spray foam in the basement to tighten that up too. So, yeah, we're, we're trying to, um, preserve the house and preserve its livability.
Thank you for that. Uh, I'd like to ask one more follow-up question of Ms. Cologne Branya. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bianco. So when somebody is thinking about making a house historic, and it comes to the question of windows, I mean, if, uh, uh, if the glass itself can't be saved, or if it's damaged, or what have you, you know, like, does that sort of lessen the historic value of the house if the windows have to? I mean, as long as the physical structure of the window is, is intact, can panes be put in that are more modern? I'm just curious about that, and it'd still be considered historic?
That, that is a very, very important and prescient question, actually, because windows are the eyes, and basically preservation is considered them the eyes to the soul of the buildings. And window preservation is a top priority wherever there are historic buildings throughout the world. It's also one of the greatest challenges regarding, as you mentioned, sustainability issues. This is taken case by case. Basically, um, if there are panes that are broken, it is recommendable to change them with a similar material as possible. If, in order to, um, storm windows as Mr. Bianco mentioned, or Dr. Bianco mentioned, um, um, one can use storm windows. There are various ways to try to make sure that windows, uh, maintain are as sustainable for the house as possible, or maintain as much of, you know, environmental uh, contributor towards sustainability as possible. Uh, maintaining historic windows is actually considered a better alternative to changing them in many cases, as long as somebody is able to actually fix them, tighten them, um, take that they can be dismantled and, um, the and sealed and put back in. Sometimes glass can be changed if it has to be changed. This is basically a can of worms, and it's one of the biggest issues that are faced by people who live in historic buildings and something that is in constant dialogue in Bloomington, and some historic districts' windows can be changed, and others they can't. It depends on, I can go on and on about.
Well, no, no, no. Well, I, I'm, while I, I'm sure that the can of worms is undesirable, I'm glad I asked because it's turned out to be a very interesting subject. Uh, if, if, uh, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask one more follow-up to Mr. Bianco.
Um, if you don't mind, let's check with other council members, please. Mr. Bianco is still on the line. Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions from council members of staff, or Mr. Bianco? Okay, seeing none, uh, Councilmember Volin, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Um, Mr. Bianco, so, uh, you know, anyone who's thinking about, uh, preserving a house historically like you are, and I'm very grateful that you are doing so. You know, it has to face some of the problems that you faced. Can you tell us more about the low-profile uh, storm protection that you've given to your windows and, like, how you came up with that solution and how it changes the look of the house?
Um, well, as to how we found it, we, we searched around until we could find the most minimalist storm window out there. Really thin frames so that they didn't, you know, and we had them manufactured and painted the color of the trim so that they, they kind of fade into the woodwork. And, you know, I think we were lucky in the sense that we could find a vendor who could manufacture them custom for us. And, but I, I think it's also the case that, you know, if you have an old house like this, you really don't want to be going to Lowe's and buying stock vinyl storm windows for it. And we, we sort of knew that when we were buying it.
That's very nice to know. Does it help the energy profile of the house at all?
Clearly, clearly. There's still, I think, as, as Ms. Cologne mentioned, you know, it's not, Ms. Cologne Brana mentioned, it's not just about the storms. It's also about, you know, working the original windows and getting them to be as tight as possible. It's a process.
Got it. Thank you very much. I appreciate the answers.
Thank you, Councilmember Holland. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. I am just now reading the packet addendum, which was released this afternoon because didn't have time to read it earlier. And I wanted to ask, I know it was, it was related directly to the amendment, which we've already passed. But I'm, I'm fascinated by this typewritten story of the, the home by one of the people who was born there. And I wonder, when was this written? And, and what's the name of the individual who typed this? Well, it's D.C. Ferris, but I don't know the context of, of this typewritten description. Ms. Cologne, is there any context you can give us for this?
Yes, of course. So this was actually, and the person who can best answer that question just raised his hand. This was provided to me by Colonel Scott Ferris, who is a direct descendant of Reverend Ferris. And this was, this was a document that was handed down through generations. And he can provide more details about when it was actually written or when it might have been transcribed, because I believe this is a transcription. May, can Scott Ferris comment?
Well, yes, Ms. Lacy, can you unmute him?
Colonel Ferris should be able to unmute himself now.
So Scott Ferris here, how are you all doing this evening?
We're doing great. Thank you.
So we have a lot of history in the area up there, going back to a long time ago. My family is one of the original settlers of Bloomington. We had two farms. One was out where the stadium assembly hall is, and then the second place up here in Steer Park. The document that you're referring to, Isabel, actually almost got thrown away. And I, I received it in, I believe it or not, an old basket from a distant relative who is in her nineties, who was getting ready, and her son was getting ready to throw it away. And so this is the only source, and there's multiple stories out there about the house. But this is the only really defining source that talks about how the house was made, who lived in it, and such and such. If you read the typewritten portion, it was the, James Ferris had four sons who became reverends, and all of them graduated from Indiana University in the, in the eighteen fifties. And so the person who wrote this was Reverend David Ferris, who would have been, to me, I guess, a great, great uncle. And he was actually born in the house. And timeframe, if you look on there, it actually says eighteen forty-three to eighteen sixty-three in that timeframe. One thing I want to point out on the one other sheet that's handwritten and not typed, which many of you may not be aware of, and I think, Dave, you live in that area up there, don't you? Don't you live on? I grew up on Maryland Drive, so I think you just live the next block over. But High Street was once upon a time called Columbus Road. And I don't think that's recorded anywhere in, in the history of Bloomington. And it was the road that actually was connected to the two farms. And this goes back, you know, to the eighteen hundreds. So did I answer your question, Isabel?
Yes, thank you very much. It's fascinating. I grew up a block away on South High Street, so.
Yeah, I know you did.
Okay, thank you, Colonel Ferris. Do we have any other questions from council members? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll now go to the public for any public comments on ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six as amended. Seeing none, we'll return to council for any final comments. Okay, Councilmember Bowlin?
I just wanted to reiterate that I'm very glad to see this happening. And I appreciate the attention and care taken by the owner, Mr. Bianco, and by the descendant, Mr. Ferris, who have really contributed to the fabric of Bloomington history. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. I will make a comment, and I find it interesting and fascinating as well. And this is not a direct question, but I was wondering if the information that we're using to document can in fact be documented or recorded in some fashion to become permanent records of, of this property moving forward. So it's not a request. I just wondered if it could be done. So it'll be part of the records and fabric of that property. So we don't have to, it'll be part of the official records, the handwritten documents and all those sorts of things. So something to think about. Okay, any other final comments from council members? Seeing none, are we ready for the question? That would be on ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six as amended. Will the clerk please call the roll? You're muted.
That would explain why I missed it. Councilmember Sim?
Yes.
Thank you. Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vanberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Gambalory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Ordinance twenty-one dash forty-six as amended is adopted eight zero zero. I do believe we have more legislation for second readings. Councilmember Flaherty?
Move that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. That resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vanberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution twenty-one thirty-seven, approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana regarding building code authority. The synopsis is as follows. The attached interlocal cooperation agreement, Exhibit A, extends through January first, twenty twenty-three, the long-term arrangement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County to combine and coordinate the provision of certain building code services. This interlocal cooperation is authorized by Indiana Code thirty-six one seven one.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Flaherty.
And move the resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven be adopted?
Okay.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have comments from city representative? I do see Mr. Rooker present. Good evening, Mr. Rooker.
Good evening, Councilmember Sims. Michael Rooker, City Attorney for the City of Bloomington. Just some brief comments. State law, as, as was mentioned, state law allows intergovernmental entities to jointly exercise powers through interlocal cooperation agreements. The city and Monroe County have many such interlocal agreements, including one regarding the administration of the local building codes. Through the building interlocal, which is before the council tonight, the county handles building permit application processing, project inspection, and permit issuance for all properties, both within the city of Bloomington's corporate boundaries and within the unincorporated areas of Monroe County. The building interlocal has been extended several times since its inception. The administration continues to believe that vesting local building code authority in a single entity, the Monroe County Building Department, is the most effective and convenient way to provide necessary building code services to the citizens of the city. Therefore, the building interlocal that's being presented to you tonight is in the same form as last year's iteration. The existing agreement will expire at the end of the day on January first, twenty twenty-two, and this resolution would extend it for another year through January first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do we have any questions from council members on, or I'm sorry, resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven, the building code authority? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and then Scambalory, and then Rallo, please.
Yes, thank you. I had a question about the last, the very last paragraph of the agreement between the city and county, where it says, "The parties acknowledge and agree that the performance of this agreement is subject to the appropriation of sufficient funds by their respective councils." And I think I had the exact same question last time. In what case would we need funds related to this agreement?
Yeah, I, I suspect that provision runs more in the county's direction than the city's. Obviously, they have to, they have to appropriate funds for their building department to continue to function. But it certainly doesn't require an appropriation of funds on our side of things, except to the extent that, you know, our planning department does have certain responsibilities under the interlocal agreement.
Okay, so just basically appropriation of funds to the relevant departments to implement the program.
That's right. And, you know, to continue to exist. So I, I think that's right. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I see. Okay. I have one other question. President Sims, should I hold off?
Yes, please. We'll go to Councilmember Scambalory and then Rallo, and no more. We'll come back to you. Thank you. Councilmember Scambalory?
Thank you. Mr. Rooker, is there anything magic about extending it for one year? We've obviously had it, we've re-upped many, many years. Is, is that controlled by statute? What would prevent us from extending it for two years? Could you provide some background on that?
Yeah, there would be nothing preventing us from extending the agreement for longer. We've had the building interlocal agreement extended for as long as five-year terms in the past. There has been some discussion internally. I don't know that this has ever gotten to any serious point about, you know, thinking about the future of this relationship long-term. And there's, there's no specific cause for that. It's just something we've thought about before. If we were to extend it for a longer period of time, you know, it would give us less flexibility if, if we wanted to rethink the agreement.
Got it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Mr. Rooker. I wondered, since we vest in the, the county implementing building codes and overseeing that, what, what role historically has the city played in influencing those building code, code standards? In other words, you know, anticipating that, you know, perhaps in the future, well, even now, we, we would, might require higher-performance materials and better insulation and so forth. What? How do we, how are we involved in that process?
Sure. So, you know, if you're, you're asking about historical context, and if you want too many details, I'm afraid I'm probably not the best person to provide those to you. But to the extent that there are rules that are promulgated by the city that would influence the, the county building department, we would expect them to cooperate with us to make certain that those rules are also enforced by the appropriate party. And oftentimes, you know, because our planning department has input in permits that are, that involve projects within the city's corporate boundary, we're going to note when there are violations of our code and the building department isn't going to act until we've released a certificate of zoning compliance, for example.
I see. In, in terms of updating building codes and so forth, do they reach out to, to city experts within the city to receive input? And is it a, is that a collaborative approach?
And, and I'm not sure you, I'm not sure exactly what you're, you're driving at Councilmember Rallo. And I'm sorry if I'm not understanding the question correctly. But when we're talking about maybe development standards for, for, for buildings or something like that, that's something that's contained in Title twenty. And, you know, we wouldn't be able, they wouldn't be able to release any of their permits until we issued a certificate of zoning compliance to them, confirming that a project was compliant with the standards we have in our local code, that, that you, you all on the council have, have legislated.
Yeah. Okay, I'll look into this more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. I do have a question, Mr. Rooker. And I'm, I understand that this interlocal agreement, one of its tenets is that the city and county have determined that it's more cost-effective and convenient for our citizens to use that process. But when we get down to definitions, if you could explain to me, we have the building code jurisdiction, which, as I understand it, comprises the entire city and county. And then it further distinguishes between city zoning jurisdiction area and county zoning jurisdiction area. So I was wondering, what were the differences there when we do have an overall building code jurisdiction? Why would we need those other two? Or what's the significance of those, if I may ask?
Certainly. So the, the city and county have different zoning ordinances. We have a zoning ordinance that was passed by this body that's contained, as I referred to, in Title twenty of the municipal code. The county has its own separate zoning ordinance. So there are projects that are going to go through the building department where different zoning rules are going to apply, depending on whether or not the project is within the city's corporate boundary or outside of the city's corporate boundary in one of the unincorporated areas of Monroe County. Does that answer your question?
That's what it does. And as I look in, yes, one more zoning and one is more actually building code. So yeah, as I look deep, thank you very much. That is clear to me. Councilmember Flaherty, we're still on first round before we go back to Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Follow-up related to Councilmember Rallo's question. I think, at least what I took from it, it has to do perhaps with energy efficiency standards and that sort of thing. My understanding historically has been that unlike other states where municipalities might be able to set more efficient, higher target standards than the state baseline code, that in Indiana, we have no control over that, that it's simply a state dictated, uniform building code in terms of efficiency standards, materials, that sort of thing. Is, is that your understanding, Mr. Rooker? Or do you, do you know that offhand?
No, that is correct. And perhaps, perhaps that was the source of my confusion with Mr., excuse me, with Councilmember Rallo's question. There are a number of codes over which it is very complicated or it's impossible even for localities to, to modify those, such as the mechanical code, much of the fire code, the building code. I think that's exactly right, Councilmember Flaherty. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more first round questions, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I had a question on part four of the agreement, interpretation and severability. Item A says, because, because the jurisdictional approach set forth in this agreement departs from current practice, the parties acknowledge and agree that the document shall be liberally construed. In what way does the jurisdictional approach depart from current practice? Is it just the fact that it is two jurisdictions or?
Yeah, you know, that's, the word current there is, is sort of awkward, isn't it? It doesn't depart from current practice anymore. It's been the practice since nineteen ninety-six. So perhaps we ought to look at removing that word the next time we look at this agreement. That's a good catch.
But it, it does just refer to the fact that there are two municipal entities working together. Is that, is that right?
That's correct. And before nineteen ninety-six, we had separate jurisdictions for building, building purposes. That's right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Any more questions from council members? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to public for any public comment on resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven. We will again ask that you use the raised hand function in Zoom to indicate your desire to publicly comment. You can use that function through the participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons at the bottom of your screen. Mobile devices and mobile phones can reach us through star nine, or you can send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom, if neither of those work. And you will have five minutes for those who desire to publicly speak. Do we have any takers this evening, Ms. Lacy?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll return to council for any final comments on resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven. Seeing none, are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance twenty, I'm sorry, resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Vanberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Sim.
Yes.
And Flaherty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven is adopted eight zero zero. Thank you. I believe we have a final piece of legislation for second reason, seeing Councilmember Flaherty.
Then move that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-eight be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been fully introduced that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-eight be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vanberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Sim.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. And motion, and motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, resolution twenty-one thirty-eight to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana in regards to the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as JAG. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution approves the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the county for the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one JAG funds. JAG funds are divided between the city and the county based on violent crime statistics reported to the FBI through the Uniform Crime Report. The city will use its portion of the grant to procure radios for squad cars, while the county intends to use its award towards the purchase of tire deflation devices.
I'm sorry, I didn't unmute myself. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I'd like to move that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-eight be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. I believe Mr. Rooker, you're the city staff to present as well.
Thank you, councilmembers. You're patient with me. This is the second of two interlocal agreements tonight. Federal law authorizes the city to participate in the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assist, Assistant Assistance Grant Program or JAG Program. The program allocates grant funds to a variety of law enforcement agencies across the country. Communities that receive an award from the program may generally use the fund for any variety of law enforcement purposes. The Bloomington Police Department and the Monroe County Sheriff are jointly allocated one award for each year. As the award is jointly given to BPD and the sheriff, program guidelines direct the city and the county to enter into an interlocal agreement to allocate the funds. As noted in the interlocal, BPD and the sheriff divvy up the funds based on a three-year review of violent crime statistics. The present interlocal divides funds for both calendar years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Last year, the city and county did not coordinate the execution of an interlocal agreement regarding the dispersment of twenty twenty JAG funds, and therefore were coordinating both twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one funds through this agreement. The parties are able to execute an interlocal agreement during this year that will still allow the entities to receive grant funds for calendar year twenty twenty. The city will be using its grant funds to purchase police radios for squad cars, while the sheriff's department will be purchasing tire deflation devices. The grant funds will be received by the city and then dispersed in accordance with the division outlined in the agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the interlocal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rooker. We'll now go to council for any council questions on resolution twenty-one dash thirty-eight. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, since we're talking about twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one grants, and it's December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, I'm wondering when this money will be spent?
Likely, it will be during next year. It will not be spent during this year. So there is additional coordination that has to happen on BPD's side after this interlocal agreement is executed by both entities. It hasn't been executed by the county yet. I don't have a firm date on when the county would review this after this body takes a look at it yet. I have requested that, but just haven't received a response yet. So it will be during next year.
And will there need to be an appropriation, a separate appropriation of these funds, or does this resolution take care of that?
I don't believe there needs to be in a separate appropriation of these funds, but I will, I will double check on that. And if there, if there does need to be, of course, that would be something we would do.
Yeah, I think in the past we have not. So I think it must go through the sheriff's department. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from council members? Mr. Rooker, I do have one, if you could just enlighten me. In lieu of the ninety-one percent to nine percent division of funds between city and county, is that population-based? One, or is that, how are the, and I won't ask you to define violent crimes stats, but how did we arrive to that percentage?
So I certainly cannot give you as detailed a definition of violent crime statistics as Brittany Murphy would be able to do from the police department. But it's just reviewing all of the qualifying incidents within the county and which agency responded to those. The division is ninety-one versus nine when you look at the, the city and the sheriff's department in terms of responding to incidents that qualify.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question. Any further questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for public comment. Once more, I will remind you, if you intend to speak, please use the raised hand function in Zoom that's at the bottom of the screen. You can get or use that function by, through the participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons. Mobile devices or phones can reach us through star nine, or you could send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. If neither of those works for you, you will be allowed five minutes to speak. Do we have any takers, Ms. Lacy?
No takers.
All right, we will return to council for any final council comments on resolution twenty-one dash thirty-eight. Seeing none, are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll?
I think so. Okay, let's see. Councilmember Vanberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Sim.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
And Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-eight is adopted eight zero zero. We will now move to legislation for first readings, which we have none this evening. We will now open for additional public comment. I will remind the public, this section is set aside for a maximum of twenty-five minutes for this section. Ms. Lacy, do we have any takers this evening?
There are no raised hands, and I do not have any messages in the chat asking to speak.
Okay, give it just a second. Thank you. And seeing none, we will now move on to the agenda, dealing with matters of the council schedule. Ms. Lacy?
So the council will hold its organizational meeting on January the fifth at six thirty. That meeting is the meeting where the council will elect officers and will also make appointments to various boards and commissions. There is a work session scheduled for noon on Friday, January the seventh. And then the council will hold a regular session on January the twelfth, beginning at six thirty, and that regular session will be immediately followed by a committee meeting in order for, for council to maintain its schedule in light of the January fifth meeting. And that is all with regard to council's schedule. The other important thing to mention is that today, the annual nepotism certifications were forwarded to council members, and those will need to be returned before December thirty-first, please. And if you have any questions about that, you can reach out to me and I'll try and answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. For the good of the order, Ms. Lacy did state that our next meeting will be January the fifth, our organizational meeting at six thirty PM. But I would like to add, in addition, tonight is our last meeting and constitutes our council break. And we will reconvene or, or the next meeting will be on January the fifth.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember Sim. Yes, you may, Councilmember Sim.
I failed to mention that actually Councilmember Rallo and myself actually do have one more constituent meeting for the year. That will be on December the eighteenth, starting at ten o'clock. It's on Zoom, and that Zoom link can be found on the council's calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. You're quite welcome. Any other final comments for the good of the order this evening, council members?
Happy holidays.
Seeing none, I will join Councilmember Smith in saying happy holidays to everyone that's tuned in, even those that are not under the sound of our voice. Please relax, enjoy your family, and most of all, stay safe. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.